Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 9 zoning board hearing. Before we go to the minutes, we're going to set the schedule for the next meeting, which will be, I'm waiting for the second Thursday, so it's the 13th of April. That'll be the next scheduled hearing. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of the last meeting? If so, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mary, second. Second by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous. It's already past the 7:05 timeline, a little bit late today. Most of these are the continued hearings from the snowstorm that we've got, that we could not hear to, and then we've got a couple added additions tonight. So with that, at the first hearing, the first hearing, the members who'll be sitting on this board will be Mary, David, John, Mark, and Brian. I'll step away for a little while. Mary, why don't you pick this up and I'll rejoin you shortly.
Okay. Did we pass out for the attendance?
Charlie, we'll pass out the attendance. We do this for every hearing, anybody that's in the room, so please fill out your name and address and...
If they're here for this hearing, right?
They're here for this, well, in general, anybody that's in the room. And we'll be passing around this for each hearing. We ask that you just sign in so that we know who you are and who has attended.
Okay.
Okay.
This is on the continued application of BIK Hydraulics Limited, a 41 Clairville Drive, Toronto, Ontario, Canada, for special permit relief pursuant to section 2.3 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a 49,531 square foot, more or less, parcel of land located on the northwesterly intersection of Depot Street and Central Street in Milford, which property is known and numbered 177 Central Street. Special permit relief sought to permit truck service and repairs on the subject property and in the existing buildings. On the application, explain the reasons you assert this. The special permit sought is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. The repair of the equipment will take place primarily inside the building. The trucks that we store will be new. Customers' trucks there for repair will only be there a few days at the most. Proposed use of premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Trucks would arrive for repair, then leave when the work is complete. It is unlikely more than four to six trucks would come and go in a day. The proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Repairs would take place primarily in the building. Nothing would be stored outside. As of 2010, diesel engines no longer produce black smoke from the exhaust pipe. At the planning board hearing on January 3rd, 2017, was a favorable recommendation, the letter from Patrick Canale, the chairman. Dear Mr. Chairman, the applicant requests a special permit to establish a truck service and repair shop on the subject property. No additions or new buildings are being proposed. Specifically, the operation will consist of the repair of truck-mounted hydraulic equipment and the related storage of vehicles. There will be no outside storage. An amended site plan will need to be approved by the planning board subsequent to the ZBA special permit approval. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals. And the applicant that's here on this, okay, would you just, would you just come right up to the, okay, and just, we've put up the plan there. If you could just tell us what, what you're proposing to do.
Actually, what they're proposing in the larger building is where they're going to repair and install forklift mount cranes such as for forms and whatnot.
And these are going to be mounted on a truck?
On a truck, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And there won't be any outside storage, you stated?
Nope.
All right. Anyone, John?
Just 16-wheel trucks are these, or?
No, they're mostly 10-wheelers.
10-wheelers.
Yeah, yeah. That's like you say, form trucks and whatnot is basically what they do.
And that's, all those repairs obviously have to be done inside.
Yeah.
Do you need outdoor storage for that?
They just have the vehicles that they're going to have, the ones that they're mounting them on, so.
Okay. But they don't need, they don't have, where they put knuckle booms on, is that what they're doing? Do they, do you, because they're saying that you don't need outdoor storage, but do you need some? It's an industrial zoned use.
Right.
You know, if you need something...
As far as I know, they're all going to be new. So it's not like they're going to have, they mainly sell new trucks, so.
Yeah, but, okay, but my only concern is you probably need some outdoor storage. And I don't want to see, I don't want to see them put a condition on saying you don't need, because when the knuckle booms get delivered, you've got to put them on the ground, right?
Right.
You might have to store some outside.
Possibly.
Yeah. And I think you, I think he should have, it's an industrial zoned use, so I think you should have some outdoor storage. You shouldn't be limited to that.
Okay.
Can't hurt you, anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Mark? Brian's an easy one. Just the booms, the booms that are coming in, as Dave says, you probably need something outside.
Yeah.
Excuse me. When it says repairs, are these going to be trucks coming in that need new booms or repair work, et cetera?
Yes.
How long, you said they'll only be hanging around maybe four days?
And that would probably all be inside.
Inside, after the repair, outside, customer pickup.
Right.
Gone the next day or two?
Yeah.
You might need some outside storage. How many you figure would be on the lot for repair at a time?
I think four is, you know, from what I know.
You'll have more of an appointment thing. You can bring it in. I've already afford the lot following week, you dream on Tuesday, Wednesday, after a couple of left.
Brian?
Nothing.
All set.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the audience that'd like to be heard on this petition? Yes, would you stand up and state your name, please?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Dabbitt. I actually live right across the street. I live at 12 Depot Street. Our driveways are pretty much like this. So my concern is any hydraulic fuel and diesel fuel coming into my yard, because I'm kind of down, so when every time it rains, everything comes into my yard. Noise, is there going to be noise? How big are these trucks? Because we've had issues with the construction behind the house. Basically, I've been in an earthquake since they started demolition. So I'm kind of not keen on having the boom trucks right next door. I also have children, which may be playing on the sidewalks or in the neighborhood in general. So those are basically my concerns, or how they're going to affect the people that are directly across the street, because there are residential homes.
Okay. Can you, would you like to...
I believe that all the work should be done inside, so there shouldn't be any outside, you know, noise, so to speak. And the work hours are going to be between, you know, 7:00 and 3:30, so, you know, I don't, I don't think there will be any noise. Any fuel, I mean, it's, it's all contained in the building, so.
Will you guys be using the driveway that's on the Depot Street side to pull in the trucks?
No, everything should come in on Central Street, because they can't get out of that area.
Yeah, it's like really tight.
Right. So basically, they're going to pull in and pull out on Central Street.
Okay.
All right. I mean, anyone else?
I have just one question for you. You mentioned 7:00 to 3:30, 7:00 to 4:00, whatever, maybe weekdays. What about weekends?
I do not know that. I don't believe that, you know, the company is...
They need Saturday use.
Yeah. They possibly would work on Saturdays, but I can't answer that question. I don't know.
I'm just addressing her concern. If they're going to be there 7:00 to 3:00, and it's a Saturday morning at 7:00 o'clock, it could be an issue.
Okay. Is Saturday at an 8:00 start normally?
Well, that's up to the board. I'm just, I'm just torn out, you know, and Sunday...
You'd be okay with 8:00?
Oh, absolutely, I think.
Can I say one more thing? I don't know how big these trucks are, but the trucks that they're using to do demolition behind our property is, has damaged my property. I have cracks all through my foundation. And if those trucks are similar to the big trucks that they're doing the demolition with, like the crane trucks, the trucks coming in and out could continue shaking my property?
No, they're not, they're not. They're, they're, they're actually, it's, they're not truck trailers. They're, it's a contained unit. So they're not as big as the trucks you had behind you.
Okay.
Would it be safe to assume they're approximately the size of a telephone truck or a Comcast truck?
Um, they're...
With a boom line?
It's, yeah, it's a boom truck. So, you know, I think they're like 40 feet long.
That's a good-sized boom.
Is there anyone else in the audience that is here to speak on this? Okay. Anyone else on the board have any comments or questions? All right. We'll give you the last word before we close the meeting and take it under advisement.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Very good. Okay, the meeting's closed. What is the pleasure of the...
You want to wait?
It's, okay, what's the pleasure, boy? Do you want to wait and vote at the end of the evening?
I'm good now with only one, I only have missed the...
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Members, what are your thoughts and...
I vote to, I vote to approve it.
Okay. Any conditions?
Just Saturday morning, can't start at 8:00. Can't start working until 8:00 on Saturday.
Okay, so the weekday hours are, weekdays they can start at 7:00, but Saturdays, no, no work before 8:00 a.m.?
Yeah.
Okay, any other conditions?
We need to condition the outside storage?
Well, the application does say that he's not going to have any outside storage.
I think he may need it, though.
I think, I think, I think he's going to, they're going to, they're going to need some outdoor storage when the new knuckle booms get dropped off, they're going to drop them on the ground, so I'm, I don't think you, you condition the storage.
I don't think we need to condition it, but I don't, I don't know. He didn't, they didn't apply looking for outdoor storage. I don't think we can, we can...
All right. So we'll just do the hours?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have, I have a motion from David with, with Saturday, no, no work to begin before 8:00 a.m.
Yeah.
And then he's Sunday restriction.
And no, no work at all on Sundays?
I'm just telling that out there to the board.
Yeah, but I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Fine with that.
No work.
No work on Sundays.
On Sundays. Okay.
And they'll be using the Central Street exit and entrance.
Yeah.
Correct?
Okay.
Central Street exit and entrance.
Yeah. Central Street exit.
Use only Central Street to enter and exit?
Yeah.
And the discretion of the company as to how much they should have outside at any given time within reason.
Yeah, you can't condition...
I don't think we can do that.
Well, not for any restriction on what he has outside.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion to no work before 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, no work at all to be done on Sunday, and use the, only the Central Street entrance to, to enter and exit. Any, anything else? And do I have a second on this?
Second.
Okay. Second by Mark. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Did he already leave? Oh, no, he's over there. Okay. Congratulations.
Dave, can you grab the attendance sheet?
Yeah, right here.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah, that's all set. You want to wait? I'll give you these at the end of the meeting, or you want them by...
Pass them down and I'll throw them in the folder.
Yep, sounds good.
Put that in the folder. Yeah, well, this is...
What time we have now?
I have eight, 7:25.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the application of Earl Bassett, 162 Hill Street, Millville. Is Earl here? Why don't you come on and step up front? On the panel will be the five, five main board members. If you have any plans or anything, you can always throw them up on the bulletin board. John, I'm going to need to get that plan put back on the file with David. Thank you. Okay. This is on the application of Earl Bassett, 162 Hill Street, Millville, for special permit and/or variance as necessary in relation to a 9,500 square foot, more or less, parcel of land located on the northerly side of Dilla Street, known as numbered as for Dilla Street. Relief request is sought in order to permit the construction of a 32-by-16-foot addition to the easterly side of the existing dwelling, which addition cannot, will not be closer than otherwise permitted. Reviewing his application. Explain the reasons that the special permit is sought with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. The application states just increasing square footage of the residence concerning the question does the proposed use of the premise create undue traffic or congestion. The applicant states no increase of vehicles concerning the question proposed uses of the premises will not cause harm or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, welfare, and safety of the public. The applicant states it will be upgrading and improving aesthetics to, to, to the property itself. In the package, board members, there is a site plan showing the driveway bulkhead and looks like a pendant addition of what he's proposing to do. This is not, doesn't look like it's engineered. We have a plot plan of living space also within there. And I'll revert right over to the planning board's review. The planning board reviewed the petition at their last scheduled meeting, February 7th, and voted unfavorable. Town planner Larry Duncan indicated that the request for the special permit of a 16-by-32 addition to the existing single-family dwelling on the subject property. Property is a regularly shaped, non-conforming lot, so any changes would require a special permit. However, because the proposed addition is to be within 16 feet from the front property line and four feet from the side east property line, variances will also be needed. So we'd recommend a favorable report be brought over to the zoning board, however, the planning board did vote unfavorable. With that, sir, we'll turn the meeting over to you. Please give us an indication of what you're trying to do. Do you have any big plan or anything there?
No, I just...
Nothing? Is this an engineered plan?
Yes, it was. That one didn't happen to be the stamped engineered.
No, but did you, did you draw that in, with the, where the houses?
Yeah, with the addition.
Okay, so it's not...
But the, there was an engineered plan that it just wasn't in that packet.
Did the engineered plan come in after this was submitted?
I'm not sure, Sean, do you have?
Yeah.
Like to see that, please. This was submitted on January 4th. Has the planning board seen this?
No.
The planning board has not seen this?
No. Unfortunately, we weren't...
You weren't ready.
No, we didn't, we weren't notified of the planning board meeting, so we had missed that meeting. So we actually weren't in attendance to even discuss what we were proposing.
Let me pass that down this way.
Yeah, no, but it's...
How many feet does that say?
It's, this is drawn in by the engineer.
More feet. Pass that to Brian as well. Charlie?
Yeah.
You sell this place? Who's the owner?
Sean.
Sean, okay. Okay.
Charlie, I'll start at your end. Have a chance to turn to see the plan, too.
And this is the only, obviously, this is the only place in the lot you can put it.
Correct, correct, yeah. The existing house is about 1,000 square feet, consists of two bedrooms and one bathroom. Mr. Featherstone lives there with his daughter and his three-year-old grandson, so what he's looking to do is put a master suite on the first floor to alleviate the upstairs for them. And also, in the bath detail, want to bring the laundry from the basement upstairs. It's an old Fieldstone foundation, you know, dingy, dirty nut, you know, old basement, so.
The only addition...
This is a two-story addition?
No, it's a one-story.
So the only thing you're adding, then, in the addition is a bathroom, there's no kitchen or anything else?
No, it's just a, in the packet, it's a 16-by-10 bedroom in the back. There's a little living area, 13-by-16 living area in the middle. Up front would be the bathroom. And then there's, there happens to be a little space that says office space, it's just a, you know, home office desk, bills type deal.
And I noticed you had a bulkhead, so you are putting another cellar under that?
For, for, yeah, also for the egress, because the egress on the basement, if you've seen the pictures, this, from the back view of the house...
Yeah.
There's a little cutout.
Yeah.
That's where the egress is for the basement now, so by this addition, that egress would be blocked. So we want to put the bulkhead in to create the egress.
Will the two cellar areas be connected, or are they...
Yes, that egress, that, exactly. The existing egress would be the way they connect.
Thank you. Brian?
Did you look at all into whether you could get additional living space within the setback lines to the, to the rear of the existing building?
Well, we, we did talk about that, but then there would be, you'd have to move the deck, the driveway, and then the way the driveway comes in next to the house in the parking area is behind, so you'd end up, now the driveway and parking area would be...
Pushed up for the back.
Way, way in the backyard. So it's, it was kind of, it's kind of a pie-shaped lot, you know? So.
Thank you. Mark?
No questions.
Mary?
So how many square feet is this new addition?
Um, I believe it's 600 square, 13, 132 by 16, 512 square feet, about thereabouts.
You can't, you can't shave it down, so it's, because it's four feet to the, to the lot line, it just, it seems you have other options in the back that you could have done with it, so you wouldn't...
Yeah, my, my concern was the same, that, that...
You could take down the deck.
He could have, he could have stayed within, pretty close to the building envelope towards the back versus this major variance request on the sides, way outside the building envelope.
What are the rooms?
The second floor consists of two bedrooms, one bath. The first floor, the left side of the house is a kitchen, eating area, front to back. The right side, the living area, front to back.
So it's only a one-bedroom, it's only one-bath house now?
Correct. A small bathroom upstairs in the back left corner.
Yeah, I got to be honest with you, I would have rather seen you done something, get rid of the deck and do something more in the back there.
And that's all, but that also is the entrance into the house and the back entrance, which would then, you'd have to come through the bedroom to get into the house.
This addition is almost bigger than the house itself, correct?
No, the house is 1,000 square feet, it's about half, half of the house.
We're talking about the footprint?
Yeah, it was...
Of the house.
Okay, yeah, not living square foot, but footprint, yes.
Dave?
I'm all set.
John?
No, no question.
Anybody else want to be heard on this? With that, before we close the hearing and take it under advisement, you have your last second.
Yeah, no, I just, like I said, I hope you guys, you know, Sean's just looking to stay there with his daughter and his grandson, so it was, that was the reason for the addition. I hope you take that, you know, under consideration. And that was it. Thank you for your time.
You said you're the neighbor?
Yes, I'm Steve Daigle, Daigle Instruction. I'm working in conjunction with my father-in-law, Earl Bassett, Bassett Home Improvement. What's that?
You're the neighbor on the side of where it's being built?
On the left side.
So you're on the opposite side.
Yeah, I'm number two.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll close the hearing and take this under advisement. Thank you very much. You can take this up at the end of the hearing if you'd like to discuss it. Are you ready to vote? I'm not ready yet.
Okay, then we'll take it up at the end.
I'm just not ready. I got to think about this. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we'll take this under advisement at the end of the hearing. Okay. Next on the agenda is on the application of John Gomes and Domingos de Silva Gomes. Good evening. On this panel, of course, it will be the five main members of the board. This is on the application of John S. Gomes and Domingos de Salva Gomes, trustees of Gomes Realty Trust, down Bear Hill Road, Milford, Mass., for the variant, for a variance of the residence of section 2.2 and/or 2.5 of the zoning bylaws. Those relate to a parcel of land consisting of 16,000 square feet, more or less, on the southerly east, on the, on the westerly side of East Street, known and numbered as 15-17 East Street. The variance release is sought in order to allow the vision of a parcel into two lots, one lot containing the existing two-story family dwelling, and the other lot consisting of an 8,000 square foot to be available for a single residential construction use only. This is right the application.
If the application is exactly as presented, can we dispense with the reading?
Have a motion to dispense?
It is exactly...
It is, there's no pending petition.
Okay, with that...
I have a motion to dispense, I'll make a motion to dispense with the reading.
Have a second?
For the second.
So a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are unanimous, so we'll dispense with the reading. What I will do is read into the, I'll read into the notes that the planning board did review this at their scheduled meeting of February 7th and voted unfavorable. Town planner Larry Duncan indicated the property is conforming a 16,000 square foot, two-family lot into an IRA zoning district. The existing two-family dwelling is non-conforming only as to a front yard setback. The property essentially is flat with no attributes of the land itself creating hardship. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report be forwarded over to the zoning board of appeals. With that, Mr. Fernandez, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm actually, this is at the right height for Ernie, had he been here. But Mr. Patnari is not present this evening.
Nobody's going to see that, right?
He's, yeah. Mr. Patnari's out of state and was unable to attend today, so this was originally scheduled for the February meeting that got snowed out, and that's why he would have been here and was able to attend then, but he couldn't this evening and didn't want to delay the petition, so asked if I could attend and present it on behalf of the Gomes Brothers and for Mr. Patnari. And I am here with Dominic and John Gomes, who are the owners of the property. For orientation purposes, this is East Street off of Central, several houses down when you take the left and turn onto East Street on the left-hand side of the road. The neighborhood, 30-plus homes in this block, as the zoning block would have it, are non-conforming in terms of size, 23 of them, well, at least 23 of the 33 are non-conforming as the size, and eight or nine of them have multifamily homes on them, two and three family homes. This is a classic situation of merger occurring for people who otherwise didn't know the law. This house was built back in the late 1800s. These were separate lots. In fact, the town continues to carry this as 15 and 17 East Street. They each have separate designations, actually. The home that's here is 15 with two units in it, and I do have a picture showing that. I have some pictures for you as well as, I can start it down here, Mr. Chairman, as well as an indication of the zoning of the lots, as they're zoned in the area. But you can see in one of those pictures that the house just has the number 15, 17 reserved for the lot next door. Classic situation, as zoning came into effect, the lots merged because this house had, this lot had nothing built on it, and so they merged to meet then current zoning. The Gomes are asking for permission to separate the lot essentially in half, so that a lot[1668.04] would be created of eight thousand square feet, conforming to the single-family zoning requirement in the district. As the area, it would not conform as to the hundred, uh, the eighty feet of frontage or the hundred feet of width. It would have approximately sixty-four feet of both of those, but you can see on the plan that there's a building envelope in which, for purposes of side yard, front yard, rear yard setbacks, a single-family home could be built. It would leave the two-family home that's here with the parking on its own lot, sufficient area in the back for, for use for family, and sufficient side yard setback that you could, can't do anything about the front yard and rear yard would conform, and it really would be pretty standard to, to family homes in the district in terms of having about eighty-five hundred square feet of land, actually maybe even larger than some. And so the request is to allow the variance to split the lot in half, create a single-family lot, to be built as a single-family lot, leave the two-family as it is, and essentially return this lot to use. And you can see from the pictures that I gave you that these lots really don't integrate today. You see sometimes where the, the lot next to it is, is grassed and it's all really integrated into the, to the home that's next door. It really sit as separate. This lot sits slightly below the lot that the house is on, and really isn't integrated in use into the current facility. And so that's the petition. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. John, I'll start down at your side.
No questions.
Jeff, Dave?
I'm all set.
Mary?
I'm all set.
I'll go to Charlie.
Yeah, and, so obviously, the, the lot, the new lot you're trying to create, there's, nothing's there, it's just land.
No, you have a picture in front of you. If you look at the house, the one with the house, to the left of it is the land, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a large eight thousand square foot piece of land that's unusual in the district, quite honestly. You just don't have those sitting there. These are very narrow lots, for the most part, as you can see from the assessors map that I've provided you. And so it, it'll be able to fit in and, and look natural within the setting of the, the neighborhood.
Thank you. Brian?
I'm all set.
Mark?
I'm set.
Yeah, I, I actually, I, I think actually, we did this further down the street, almost identical, not too long ago, maybe a year ago, and it, it's pretty consistent with the entire neighborhood, so, um, I don't have any further questions at this time. Anybody in the audience care to be heard? If not, you have the last word before we close the hearing, take it under advisement.
I would appreciate your consideration for a favorable.
All right, I know I closed the hearing. Is this gonna be a three-bedroom home?
I actually don't.
Two-bedroom home, not four?
No, no. Three, that's good, yeah.
Okay, uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm all set on this one, if you're willing to vote aye.
So we have a motion to approve as submitted?
No more than three bedrooms.
No more than three bedrooms?
No.
Yep.
So we have a motion, we have a motion to approve with, with no more than three bedrooms. All those in favor?
Did you get a second?
Huh?
Did we get a second?
No, I didn't get a second. I got a second?
Got a second.
I got three guys to give me a second, so I'll take Dag's second.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. All right, well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That's unanimous, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we have to sign that plan later, I'll put that under this one. Next on the agenda is the application of Driven Ventures LLC.
This is the one I'm supposed to be here for.
Again? Okay. This is actually new on the agenda, the application, Driven Ventures LLC, two thirty-one East Main Street, for a special permit for relief of section two point one and two point three of zoning bylaws in relation to a parcel of land located on the East Main Street, known and numbered as two thirty-one East Main Street, unit four A, which parcel is owned by Christie Realty LLC, Burrows Road in Lexington. The special permit is, relief is sought to permit the applicant to assume the operations of the current rental car business and class two license in the same manner as previously approved for the current operation, including the sale of used motor vehicles with zero vehi, with zero vehicles on site. Okay, this probably will still remain to be the five main members of the board. With that, I'm the lengthy one, do we have a motion to dispense?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, dispense with the reading, and it's exactly as presented.
With that, I have a motion, is it exactly as presented, Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, it is.
A second? Mark? A second, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. I will read into the record that the planning board did review the special, uh, did review this on March seventh, recommended favorable, and town planner indicated that the plan submitted with the application is the site plan approved by the planning board on ten fifteen twenty thirteen. In addition, the class two license is also being requested from this gentleman to transfer it to the applicant for their occasional purchase of the vehicles to lease, although there will be no auto site, auto sales of any kind. Therefore, Larry Duncan did, and the planning board did vote to move a favorable decision over to this board. With that, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Fernandez.
Yes, for the record, John Fernandez, attorney here for Driven Ventures. My office is at twelve Main Street in Milford. With me is John Marshallitis, who is one of the two principals in Driven Ventures. The other is a gentleman by the name of Rand Curry, who couldn't be here tonight. His father actually passed away, and the funeral was today. I didn't think his presence would be necessary, and that John can answer any questions that the board might have. This is, you will recall that back in, I think, October two thousand and thirteen, you approved a change of location for Deborah Atias doing businesses, Star Car Rentals, from across the street where her husband had, owns a Plaza, to this Plaza, which at that time he also owned, Mosher Atias. They had moved from the Nathaniel Plaza across the street to this Plaza. And that was approved such that, this is the Acapulco Plaza down, I'll call it as such, since it's probably the most noticeable of businesses in there, down on East Main Street. Acapulco's here, Tech Pro's over here, and this is the main office building, which is two stories. There are a couple of suites upstairs that are occupied by businesses, and approximately half the suite in here, of the, the floor in here, is occupied by Star Car Rentals. And what Deborah Atias has done is run a business here for the last three-plus years, where six spaces are, are reserved out back for rental, and one space is reserved out front, and they're handicapped right in the front, and they have no more than six cars at any time for rental on the site, as may be required. She parks there. It's, it's really a one-person operation on a day-to-day basis, and they have a class two license because with no, with a provision, there'll be no sales, cars for sale on site, because what they use it for is just to be able to go to the auction, buy and sell the cars that they use in the rental business, because they turn them over. They, they have very nice cars, but they turn them over pretty quickly, and so they use the class two license. There have been no complaints against the business of any kind over the past, well, as long as they've been in operation, and so this is really just a change of ownership. Deborah and Mosher are moving out of the business. John and Rand would like to get into it, and it's really a purchase of the assets and a taking over the operation just as it's operated. Rand Curry, who isn't here today, has an MBA, has worked in the travel industry on the IT side of things, and has familiarity with how the travel industry works for seventeen years. John has a, a degree in finance from the University of Massachusetts, has served in, in, uh, the military, was in Desert Storm, came home, opened his own business. He has run a real estate mortgage and finance business out of the Hopkinton area for the last twenty-plus years. In addition, he has worked in a dealership and worked in the rental car industry for a few years, and has a passion for automobiles, so knows them, and so the, the, the interest here is for the two, excuse me, the two of them to combine their own experiences to really just continue to run this business in something they think that they can do well with, and so they'd just like the permission of this board. The reason we're here is that the, the special permit, originally when issued at Nathaniel Plaza, was not made personal, but when reissued for the transfer over to here, was made personal to the Atias', so we need to have the special permit reissued to the new entity. Otherwise, it would just be a change of ownership. This doesn't even require site plan waiver. There's no site plan issues at all, because there's, there's simply no change in the operation.
Charlie, I'll start on your side.
No questions.
Brian?
No questions.
Mark?
No questions.
Mary?
Ditto, no questions.
All set.
All set?
All set.
Yeah, I'm all set. This is gonna run with the applicant, the license will be run with the applicant anyways. You're not gonna wash any cars up there either, right?
No.
Yeah. That's fine, okay.
Take the cars out for washing.
Anybody else have any comments or questions for the board on this applicant? With that, we'll close the hearing, take it under advisement.
Again, I, I appreciate your consideration and ask for a favorable on this, if you would.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm all set.
We have a motion to, to approve with the aspect that, of course, this runs with the applicant, as mostly does, and we're not washing cars or anything, so, similar as, as before.
I'll make the motion on the applicant.
Have a second?
Steve's turn.
I'm all set.
You're all set, okay, you're all set, meaning you're, you're good.
You second it?
Yeah, I'm second.
All those, third, all those in favor?
Aye.
I feel like I'm at the planning one. All right, great, thank you, congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you.
He's kinda quiet, Dave, tonight, so I figured we'd go down that end.
Thank you.
You have one.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I don't need to do anything on the plan with that. This goes to this one. That one was Gomes. Okay. Uh, the next hearing is gonna be on the application of Mark Menard. Mark here?
Yes, I am.
Join us.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Um, have a seat near the microphone, or if you have a plan that you wanna present, you can put that on the board as well?
I have basically, pretty much a copy of what you guys have.
Okay. All right, I'll just read the, I'll just read the, the notice. Um, the application of Mark Menard, Washington Street in Attleboro, for a special permit relief pursuant to three point one point two and any other applicable, uh
Please, the reading?
I'm still reading it.
Oh, okay.
Relation to a thirteen thousand, two hundred nineteen square foot plus or minus parcel land on the westerly side of Highland Street, known as numbered one twenty-four Highland. The relief is sought is to put the application to replace the, the single-family structure, which was destroyed by fire. With that, the, of course, this has gone on to the, the planning board, clearly the applicant states, and I'll paraphrase, this is, in restoration, was a former home before. There's no proposed difference of use from the current use from prior, and there is no, no issuance concerning the safety hazard welfare from the general public. This did go through the planning board on March seventh, they did also recommend favorable. A letter from town planner indicates that the applicant rescues a special permit to replace a single-family dwelling on the property. The original dwelling has been destroyed by fire. The dwelling is considered non-conforming by virtue of the lot not being undecided in the RIB zoning district. Section three point two, three point one point two of zoning bylaws specifically provides for the restoration of a non-conforming structure damaged by fire to the extent of more than seventy-five percent of its replacement value upon the issuance of a special permit by the zoning board. Therefore, they did recommend a favorable report to this board. In the file, we do have the disturbing aspect of a terrible fire, which I think is pretty devastating, I'm sure, to the homeowner, and also, we have here plans and drawings of the new structure to, that will be built. So with that, sir, just give us a brief overview, what you're, what you're gonna do?
Sure, sure. Project is, uh, the property is owned by the Salvation Army of Massachusetts. By the way, my name is Mark Menard with NATO Corporation. We're a commercial general contractor located in South Attleboro, and I am the senior vice president and the senior project manager there. We have about a three-year working relationship with the Salvation Army. We do, usually don't do residential things, but they came to us with this issue, and , uh, Major Erwin and his wife lived in the property that was destroyed by fire on Easter morning of two thousand and fifteen. We basically are replacing in kind, but not in, not exactly the same structure. It does conform with all of the setback requirements of the RV zone, which is something that I wanted to point out, and also the surrounding neighborhood has lots that are substandard to the current fifteen thousand square foot zoning, as this entire plot appears to have been plotted prior to the current zoning laws. With that, it's, it's my humble opinion, this one should really be a slam dunk, and I hope that the zoning board finds much favor in the proposal and the special permit request that the other town folks have by virtue of their letters to you. With that, if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them, and respectfully request your approval tonight.
Great, all right, thank you. John, I'll start with you.
Is Major Erwin and his family moving back into this?
Yes.
Residence?
Yes.
Now, how does this work? It's, the, the home will still be owned by the Salvation Army?
Yes.
Okay, so this can only be single-family, no subsidized housing or anything?
No, 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 it can't be, it can't be. It's actually classified, if you look at the, if you look at the, I don't know the proper term for it, but it's a copy of your own tax assessor's record on it. It's actually classified as a rectory, which means it can be a residence, and Salvation Army tends to move people around about every ten years or so, because they get a flavor of the entire country, and they've owned the property since nineteen eighty. I believe three families have lived there since then. The Erwins may be near the end of their stay in Milford, Massachusetts, but another family will take their roles and, and would move into the house at that point in time.
I'm all set. Mary?
I'm glad, I, I go by it all the time, and I keep saying, when are they gonna do something with it, so.
Well, we didn't even realize we needed this permit until we applied, until we applied for the regulation.
Well, for the longest time, it was the, just the burnt-out house, so it was nice when they took that down, but glad to see something going up there, and it looks like it'll be a nice
Yeah, if, if you folks are in favor, this will go as quickly as we can make it go, because the Erwins have been displaced for way too long already.
I'm unanimous, I'm all set.
All set?
No questions.
Brian?
What, what style of home are you replacing it with?
We're replacing it with a two-story colonial with an attached two-car garage. So footprint is, the footprint is a little bit larger than the house that burned down, however it does, on, on all, all four setback requirements, they meet the setback requirements. So you'll see that from the, the line plan from the doubt eligible.
Great, thank you. Charlie?
I'll set.
Okay, uh, before we close the hearing, you have your last word? Anybody else want to hear from this one? Okay.
I think I'm all set, I'd like to hear your last one.
Great, all right, thank you. All right, we'll close the hearing. What's the pleasure of the board? I have a motion?
A motion.
We have, I have a motion to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, so you know the process, you got a twenty-day appeal period?
Twenty-day appeal period, okay.
Then you're good to go.
All right, is there, is there, is there any way to get a foundation permit at my own risk during that appeal period?
Um, that you can take up with John Erickson, the building department, but it could be possible, I just don't know.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, good luck. Okay, um, this one was Gomes. Do I have the sheet on that one, Charlie?
What's that?
Could you pass me the sheet on this hearing?
Yeah, it's right in front of you. On the, with the, with the clipboard.
Thank you, okay. All right, let's go back to the, is this the Bassett hearing?
Bassett one.
Yeah, the Bassett hearing. Uh, board members, let's go back and take a look at this. What, what's the pleasure of the board?
I, I don't have a problem with it, only because